This meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on the City Clerk, Ivan Nelson, for the roll call.
Councilman Harris.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Avery.
Here.
Echols.
Here.
Stewart.
Here.
Councilman Cannon is absent today. Councilman Reed.
Here.
We have a quorum present and the meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Brian Harbison to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Almighty God, we thank you so much for life, for the ability to be here today. God, I just pray for your wisdom and knowledge for this council. They make important decisions today that will affect this entire community. Pray for the Mayor's office and the staff that he has. God, that you would just anoint him with the direction that he needs to take this city in. We thank you for blessing Gaston and pray that you'll continue to bless us. We seek to do your will. We'll give you the praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session in the City Council meeting held on February the 5th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of the accounts for the week of February the 1st through 7th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamations, Mayor. We have no unfinished business today. Number nine, this is a time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 808 Rogers Street in District 3. Frankie and wife, Jesse Lee Vines, being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this?
Yes, sir.
Would you go to the microphone, please? State your name and address to the City Clerk.
My name is Eric Wood. I currently live in Huntsville, Alabama, 3201 West Timer Drive. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm a young lawyer. I started practicing in Gaston and I have the pleasure of representing the Vines family. We have a lawsuit pending against Alabama power that is the reason for this nuisance. My clients are of limited means and we have expert depositions that have not yet been taken to where abating this nuisance right now would constitute a spoliation of evidence that's necessary for this litigation.
Okay. All right, we'll have to take the vote. Any questions, Bill?
Oh, I mean, I don't have any questions other than the fact, because I'm sure he can't answer it when this might be resolved with the courts.
I would, I'm hopeful this will be resolved by the end of this year. There's no date set certain, but I will box myself in in this respect that if I can take one key deposition, I should know after that whether or not additional time is needed to get a new expert out there to evaluate the premises.
So this hasn't been set for trial at any level. It may not be a bad, it may not be a bad idea for you to gauge, engage the city attorney in some level of dialogue because at this point, we are, we're dealing with a nuisance issue. And we, I mean, we really have, for the sake of that community, we've got to address that nuisance issue.
May I ask also, the gathering of evidence that you need to present your case, could that, I'm just asking a question, you're the expert, you and Lee answered this far. Could that evidence be gathered and presented in a court of law without the building actually having to be there during the trial?
I think what he's asking is, he's wanting to take the deposition of the power company's expert, which I believe is probably, I'm guessing here, a forensic, electrical forensic expert.
Yes, sir.
And based on that testimony, he's judging he might have to go engage a similar type expert who would have to go to the property and inspect the building and in order to draw his conclusions. So I don't think that his request would be that the House remain, that remain standing until the end of trial, but until he can get an expert to go investigate, because the expert would go look at the house, photograph, do his thing.
Right.
And all that would be preserved. And once that's complete, then, then there'd be no spoliation. It would be, once that's complete, it wouldn't matter.
Okay.
But, I mean, it's...
But from a legal standpoint, and we run into this before, really, we can't do anything until that's...
Well, I mean, there's nothing preventing us from carrying on with what we need to do.
That's right.
Well, that's not true.
We want to delay it. We're delaying it for...
Delay it until he gets the evidence or he gets whatever he needs to get and then you can move on with the process.
Yes, sir.
That's what he's asking for.
From a legal standpoint, we can carry on with what we need to do. Now, if it conflicts with their case, they could certainly get an order from the circuit judge telling us to hold off for a time period.
Okay. That's what I just got to say.
I think the simplest thing for us to do is table this indefinitely and encourage him to proceed as fast as you can so we can get this nuisance out of the way.
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's, that's all. I'm just going to, we've run into this before and I know our building department and our legal department, when we had a full-time guy here, would pretty much tell us, and I'm not down on you, Lee, but pretty much tell us what you just said. I mean, we have a legal obligation at this point because the first thing they would do is go to the courts and get the courts to make us hold up on it. And we don't need to go through all that process. We just need to table it. I wouldn't want anybody to go in and demolish my house, particularly if I'm in the middle of a lawsuit and I'm trying to preserve evidence. And I don't think nobody sitting out there in the audience would want that to happen, even though I've had all kinds of complaints and I was thinking we was going to get the houses down, but, and I knew that there was some legal wrangling going on. I just didn't know what stage it was at, but I'm glad to know now. And I'm going to recommend that we do table this at this point.
Second.
Oh, you don't want to hear from the building department?
You hadn't heard from Brian yet.
We hadn't heard from Brian. I said I'm going to recommend it. I didn't make the motion yet.
Oh, okay. I thought you made a motion.
Not yet, no. I want to hear from Brian.
All right.
Ready?
Yeah, we're ready.
See, this is my constitutional right.
That's right. That's my constitutional right.
I'll just pass the picture and let you see exactly what we're dealing with here. I don't know that this has been mentioned, but this also involves the house next door, which the case will be brought before this body next week. The fire obviously caused both structures to be destroyed. And I understand your argument that, that we have a responsibility to the property owners to try to maintain evidence. We also have a responsibility to the neighborhood. My case has been going on, will be exactly one year tomorrow. So the houses have burned, obviously, way over a year ago. One thing that our attorney did mention was the fact that if this body chooses to pass a resolution today, Eric would still have the opportunity to seek an injunction, a temporary restraining order against the city. What that would do in essence, and I would entertain this to the council, that you take advantage of that, that gets it away from you, puts it in the circuit court, and then we would, we would handle this issue from then on until the investigation were complete, depositions were taken. He's looking with a scared look on his face. We'll help you with that restraining order if that'll help. I just don't see tying this case up indefinitely with the council. This way, you can send a message to the community. We've done all that we can do. Now it's in the court's hands with a temporary restraining order. So that's what I'm asking. And I'll discuss this with Lee before the council meeting. So that's what I'm asking today.
Brian, is what you're suggesting consistent with what you've done with similar cases in the past?
Yes. Not all the time.
A lot of times, we've had, a lot of times we've had a judge put a temporary restraining order and they don't even come to tell us. We just, is that not right, Brian?
I'm sorry.
A lot of times we have a judge do a restraining order on something like that, temporary, and nobody's even been here to tell us about it. You just get notified, isn't that correct?
That's, most cases, yeah, most cases, you'll pass it and I'll be hit with a restraining order within a few days. So you're not even aware of most of those cases, that's right. So basically, what I'm asking you to do is pass something that we anticipate receiving a restraining order on, you know, in the same action, we're sending a message to the community out there on Rogers Street that we've done everything we can do legally to abate this nuisance. Now we're waiting on a judge.
What about the other two houses? You've mentioned one, but there was actually three houses.
I'm aware of 808 and 810. I'm not aware of another.
The house on Avenue D was also damaged by the same fire.
Okay. I'm not aware of that.
I know you're not working the case.
As far as I know, that case is not ready to be presented to the council, so there might be some title issues, reason the case has been delayed being presented to you. And the other case would have been today, but there was one week delay and some title surge, so 810, and I'll be asking the same thing next week, that you pass a resolution anticipating an injunction against the city.
Have the family, well, I don't know. The concern I have, and I've been in touch with both families, the concern I have is the one at 808, where the fire started, caused the house at 810 to catch fire and the house on Avenue D to catch fire. So I have a major concern that we've got three families here involved, and I don't know if all three has retained counsel at this point in time. But it's important that the one at 808 be preserved because of the fact that it will, you know, impact 810 and the house on Avenue D.
Eric's here representing 808.
Right.
Property owner's 808. And I'm sure, I'm sure, okay, you are representing the other families this one.
So you're doing both?
Okay.
Okay.
So that takes care of that.
Okay. What about the house on Avenue D? Okay.
But if that's part of your chain of evidence, would you not need to also take some injunction action there as well?
I'm not sure if that could be relevant.
It caught fire the same night that these caught fire, by that fire. It's relevant from the folks who I've talked to who owned it. It's relevant to them. That's my only concern. I want to make sure that all of, that, you know, the people in my district are taken care of. I've got the complaints. I don't mind having the complaints about the house not being torn down because I know there was some litigation going on. And I just want to make sure that everybody gets a fair opportunity in the litigation to be made whole, if that's the case. We both, everybody wants them to calm down. I want them to calm down worse than anybody because I get the cause. But at the same time, I don't want to effectively, you know, mess up a family when there's some litigation going. So with that, and you're going to bring the other one back next week, I'm going, then instead of just ask for a one-week table so we can deal with both of them at the same time, and in the meantime, the attorney can't do this, but I could ask the attorney to look at Avenue D, I mean, you know, on my behalf, not, because I don't know, I'll get with the property owner and see if they'll contact you. You can't contact them, but I'll get with them to see if they'll contact you. Once we get everybody together, then I feel confident in getting the restraining order to go ahead and pass it.
The only catch I see is if we go ahead and vote to abate this nuisance, it falls into the hands of the court and it's out of our hands then, it may drag on a couple more years and nothing we can do about it. But if it stays in our hands, we can give them six months and abate the nuisance if they don't move. I mean, that's just the way I'm looking at it.
You're going to do it for a week?
Well, I want to table this one for a week because I want to make sure all the residents are covered under this litigation who were damaged. That's my only concern at this point in time. Again, if we pass those two, then the courts will come in and, you know, stop us from tearing down the two, but then we've got to come back and deal with that third one because it's still burnt from that same situation. I just want to try to get it all cleaned up at one time and see if we can get all three people under that litigation. If we can do that, then I don't have a problem passing it because then the courts will come in and protect all three of them to such time they can get it done. But you're absolutely correct, Bill. It's going to sit there until the courts decide, as opposed to the council deciding. But I want to make sure all the people are protected, that's all.
Okay.
Yeah, I get the complaints, I mean, big time. As a matter of fact, I think I might have a couple of voicemails right here if you want to hear them. I'll pass them on to you, Brian.
I've got some.
Oh, you've got some of them, okay. That's the, that's the end of that? Public hearing?
Yeah.
I'm going to ask for a one-week table on this one.
Second.
Those in favor to table the resolution for one week, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for one week.
Ten minutes. Our final public hearing is a resolution approving issuance of an alcoholic beverage license for two brothers, Bar and Grill, located at 1419 East Broad Street. Damian Stewart has applied for a lounge retail liquor license. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of it? Would you please come to the microphone? State your name and address for the City Clerk, please.
Yes, sir. My name is Damian Stewart. My address is 1109 Acre Circle, Gaston, Alabama, I mean, Glencoe, Alabama. I'm here to represent two brothers, Bar and Grill, on the resolution for approving the issuance. This is so, so important to me as a, you know, young man because I have invested a lot of time, a lot of energy, as well as a lot of income in this building and property. Just don't, I just can't explain how much this would mean to me if we could actually get this passed because, like I say, I've been putting money in this building for about five or six months now and been getting to run around on what I'm supposed to do next. Being young and not having a business before, you know, is just, just frustrating, but just like to put it in you guys' hands today and hopefully you'll see things, you know, see fit to give me a license or proof of interest. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I just want to say that I'm not one of the brothers. He spells his name with a D. I spell mine with a T, so I'm not one of the brothers.
That ain't what I heard. That's not what I heard.
He's the reverend.
Bill, didn't you used to own that property one time?
You still do. I heard.
No, no.
No conflict.
Is there any, is there any discussion?
Not really.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Eleven is a resolution authorizing agreement with American Bass Anglers Incorporated for the city to sponsor a fishing tournament to be held at the Coucheau Landing, May 11, 2013, in the amount of $1,500. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New businesses, is there any?
Yes, Mr. President, I have a couple of items I'd like to bring up. One is a resolution awarding bid 3230 to Verizon Wireless for wireless communications. I'd ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I'd ask for passage.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, this is dealing with our wireless communications, our cell phones here in the city, due to a number of problems that we've encountered with our present service provider. But we did put this out to bid, by the way, and of course, this is 4G, what's that other?
LTE.
LTE, yeah. I had to think. This provide us with 4G LTE, which is the latest wireless communication. So this will bring us into the up-to-date 21st century in wireless.
Any other discussion?
I understand this has saved the city about $300 a month on their phone bill. That's correct.
Somewhere in that neighborhood. Probably in the long run, it might save a little bit more than that, but right now, the present value saving is about $300 a month.
The important thing is improved service that we get. That's the important thing.
You mean, you got service?
When we get it.
Okay.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
And, Mr. President, I have a resolution here, and this resolution is endorsing the Alabama Compact as an alternative approach to immigration reform. I'd ask for unanimous consent to consider.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Okay, I'd ask for passage.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, let me just read what this basically says. We're talking about immigration reform as it is in the state of Alabama now and in the country. It says, "Whereas immigration laws should embrace compassionate and practical values, law enforcement would focus on crime and not civil violations, pro-family values with no unnecessary separation of families, pro-economic values to help agriculture and business." And then it says, "Freedom, Alabama should be a place that welcome people of goodwill." And that's basically all we're saying is we're asking the state legislature and the federal government, our representatives, to look at the laws that we have on the books now. Let's come up with a fair and practical law that's going to support those issues. And the Alabama Compact is a part of a number of states around the country who are putting this compact together to try to get our federal government to move on some things. And I think that's what you see now. If you look around the nation, you see a lot of movement on now with immigration, but it's coming about, by these PACs, and this is just a group of Alabama people. What this does, this puts the city of Gaston out front in saying that we want something on the books that will enhance pro-family values, that will help economic development, and take our law enforcement off of these crazy laws that we got on the books and put them out there arresting criminals who are actually violating these serious laws. That's all we're saying today with this resolution.
Yeah.
And we're just the first in the state to do that.
Yeah. Robert, I did have reservations because I didn't want to get involved with the state and the federal and what all they're doing about immigration, but after all y'all's wisdom and your research and our council approval, I'll go ahead and go for it.
Thank you, Ben. Appreciate that.
Call for a question. Unless somebody else had a comment. I'm sorry.
Well, I was going to, Robert.
But go ahead.
No, I, I'm like Ben, I don't want to, we're not in the immigration business and it should be done by the federal government, and this is telling them, get off of it and do something about the immigration. And Alabama now, as far as I'm concerned, has got a real blacklist with the one, the law that we have, and we'd like for them to look at it again and do something like Robert says, that makes it a little humane and not, not as tough as it is.
Bob, I think we're going to Washington in March. I believe we can take a few things up there to tell them to get off their butt with. I'm serious about that.
Well, this is one of them. I thought we could...
Ben, I think we've already, we've already included that in our talking points when we get to Washington next month.
Absolutely.
It will be...
The people out there need to be letting us know since we're going on a trip to what they want to know about what's going on up there. I've got a pretty good idea since I've been up there about 10 or 15 times.
Well, I don't necessarily know if I want to hear what the people want to say to them.
You can't repeat half of it.
No, I know.
Well, I was bored shift three years, so I'm used to that.
Oh, okay.
Bring it on.
I mean, with a group that's got a 15% rating and below, I don't know if I want to take that message up there.
You might want to go ahead and ask them to do two terms and then they'll make a decision based on what's right instead of how long they can stay up there, both sides, both sides.
Well, that can be brought up.
That's right.
Yeah. You know, and, Mr. President, one thing I do want to say about that, you know, not to continue to beat a dead horse with a stick, but, you know, the economic impact of the current immigration policy and law is just unbelievably negative for the state of Alabama. And I think most of us understand that, but, you know, I've had the opportunity to function in that transplant international business space, and I can tell you that they don't look very favorable at the state of Alabama for our immigration law, immigration reform and our law. So we have, we have an opportunity to reform it and actually do something that is more, to use the term that Mr. Echols used, more humane and sensible. And the other thing, and I think Mr. Avery hit on, Councilman Avery hit on this a second ago, is this basically drives dialogue. This is not a law, this is not a suggestion of a law. It's more or less driving dialogue. As most of us know, as this process led to the law as we know it, which by the way is tied up to some degree in the courts, there was not a whole lot of open dialogue. It was, we were force-fed to some degree. So, so again, this is an opportunity for us to engage in some level of dialogue.
And also, Mr. President, this also, at the same time, Councilman, we will, yes, do that far out, but at the same time, it will let our legislatures know, our legislators know that, you know, they need to man up, step up to the plate, you know, and have immigration reform and immigration policies and procedures in the state of Alabama that are not dictated to them by somebody halfway across the United States. So, you know, come, man up and be your own person and have your own policy and not have, you know, somebody from, you know, somewhere else. We all know who dictated this policy to the state of Alabama. Let's get it right, you know, and be more, like I said, more humane. As far as, as far as the federal government is concerned, you know there are going to be some changes and there are going to be some immigration reforms because you take a look at the, at the elections for 2012, and people are scrambling to try to now do what's right for these United States as far as immigration is concerned.
Call for a question. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any other new business?
You want to do that? No, that's true. I didn't go by the office on the way down here and I didn't know I had one, but there's some school teachers sitting right back here. Dr. Schmoo, Mr. Bass, Mr. Littlefield. She'll scoot to the corner. Okay. And when I said no and I looked around, they all looked over with their glasses and Miss Littlefield was doing this and I knew I messed up on something. But anyway, if y'all would come up, please, I'll read this.
So you knew you messed up on something.
That's right. Take all of them, scoot to the corner. For as the Gaston Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, Inc., will celebrate Founder's Day on Sunday, February 17th at Galilee Baptist Church at 4:00 PM. Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, Inc., is celebrating 100 years of sisterhood, scholarship, and service at its 51st National Convention in July in Washington, DC. The benefits of preventing and overcoming mental and/or substance use disorders are significant and valuable to individuals, families, and the community at large. The Gaston Alumni Chapter was chartered in Gaston on January 5th, 1977, and is celebrating with the National Sorority 100 years. The Gaston Alumni Chapter implements programs centered around its five-point thirst. Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, Inc., was founded January 13th, 1913, on the campus of Howard University by a group of 22 courageous women of vision to promote finer womanhood. Therefore, be it resolve our sherman gotten, the mayor of the city of Gaston, do hereby proclaim Sunday, February... Sunday, February 17th, 2013, as the day that Gaston Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated celebrates their 100th anniversary celebration, 100 years of sisterhood, scholarship, and service. And by doing so, I extend best wishes for successful and enjoyable eating to the sorority.
Good morning.
Thank you, Mayor Gaitan, council members.
Pull that mic down just a little bit, there you go.
Council members and other department heads for the city. Ladies and gentlemen, as we celebrate Delta's centennial year throughout 2013 and reflect on the history and legacy of our dynamic sisterhood, deltas all across the country are celebrating this year, 2013. This is the year it was founded. We are a nonprofit organization. We have about 275-plus members, and we do community service. We work here with the mental health, we read at Head Start, we give scholarships in the amounts of thousands of dollars. We had a scholarship dance just before Christmas, and we are, contribute also to the Carver Museum. We are with them also. But I just wanted to let you know that the deltas are in your city. You might meet somebody in March in Washington, and they will ask you about the deltas. What are the deltas doing down there? Well, we are carrying a torch now. It started at the Rose Bowl. We had a float in the Rose Bowl parade. We went to Hollywood, had a gala, New York, and we are going back to New York because we want to go to the UN and meet some of those dignitaries there. But we will be carrying this torch for the rest of this year climax in Washington, DC, July 1st through July 5th. Now, Maine, I want to invite you, all of you, to come Sunday and share with us our founder's day and our 100th celebration ceremony, and we are having a speaker who is an ex-supervisor, and she's on the State Board of Education, Dr. Evette Richardson. So if you can, please come, we'd love to have you.
Mayor, I'm kind of glad you left that upstairs because we had those beautiful ladies with us the whole meeting. Sometimes when we do that, they leave, but I had the opportunity just to look back there and just keep looking at all those good-looking ladies, so maybe when we have good-looking ladies, we need to do their proclamation at the end of the meeting as opposed to the beginning.
You through, Robert?
Not really, but I'll shut up.
Department reports, committees, boards, are there any?
I can just go brownie points.
Remarks by the mayor and the council, Robert, you want to start?
I've probably talked too much now with this cold I got and everything, so I'll just leave it with that. Just talk about those good-looking ladies, I'll just look at them for a while. I can get a few more brownie points. Bill?
I would like to mention something that's been on my mind, well, since the shooting in Connecticut, really, the safety of our children in school is very, very important and there's been a lot of talk about what to do. I think a police officer in the school is something we couldn't do. I know the mayor's working on a project now that we can do this, we have the finances to do it. I guess what the bottom line is I'm getting to, we don't need any more taxes to get this done. We don't, we don't need another penny sales tax. We have adequate money to do this, and I think it's important that we do it, and the mayor has a program going that's going to accomplish this, but we don't, we don't need any more taxes. It would be detrimental to our area to do this, and it just, shouldn't happen. That's all I have to say.
Derek?
Thank you, Mr. President, I don't, I don't have anything to do.
Billy?
Thank you, Mr. President. The school shootings, you know, and the security and the safety of our children, you know, it's paramount, and it's there because, you know, it has happened so recently, and so, it's amazing how after six, eight months after an event, you know, as tragic as that was, people tend to forget, you know, those things happen. But it's mindful of us all to be conscious of the fact that we must do something to help, to secure our kids and our students. Now, my thing is, you know, it should come from the top down. It should come from the top down because Gaston itself is not the only corporate city that's going to be involved in trying to protect kids, it's going to be nationwide. And of course, when it comes down from the federal government and the state, you know, your governor and, and, you know, the state superintendent, you know, they have the responsibility of designating funds, you know, to make sure that we can put those things in place, not just policing, but additional security measures that will protect our kids. So let's, you know, and then, of course, our citizens and our county, you know, are also involved. But from the top down, you know, there should be designated funds, and we're going to be looking to let that happen for our, for our representative. That being said, we're going to have a meeting at East Gaston Record...
Thank you. We're going, you heard me anyway, did you? We're going to have a meeting at East Gaston Recordations Center next Monday, the 18th of February, at 6 o'clock. And we will have with us that night Becca Henson and Nick Hall from Community Development. They have agreed this morning to be there, and they'll be discussing city programs that we have for people that need assistance, you know, in home maintenance. So I encourage everybody to come out to that meeting to take advantage of the information that these two people will have for us. The mayor, the mayor wasn't aware of that, I just did it this morning, they asked me to make sure that the mayor knows it, so we're putting it out there, you know, and it will be in the form of an email also, so that all partners will be informed as to what's happening in East Gaston on next Monday. Everybody's invited to come, not just residents of District 1. Everybody that's interested in any programs that we have, come on out to that meeting.
Ben?
Yeah. I want to let Eric know that I've kind of watched him during the meeting, and it was earlier said that he looked like he had a scared face. He ain't got no scared face. No. He's a young lawyer on the, on the prowl, and I'm with you, son, I think you're doing great. I want to bring to the attention of District 7, we've had a number of break-ins up there, we've had a truck stolen, we've had a lot of walking around, this sort of thing. Be observant in my district and citywide, of course, but Sherman, I was up on Shannon Drive the other day checking a pole number, and I rode by the house, rode back by the house, and rode back and stopped. This woman ran out of the house with a telephone in her hand, she said, "What are you doing in my neighborhood?" And I didn't, she took me, you know, I didn't know what to say. She said, "I'm on the phone to the police right now." That's observable. Yeah. Once the lady got on Bellevue Drive looking at dugout ditch, and the guy stopped me wanting to know what I was doing on my own street. It's the people who don't belong in your neighborhood that you got to watch out for.
That's right.
Pick that phone up. It's on the way to the border, we're going to stop them from kicking doors in and stealing our stuff, okay? I just want to bring that back to attention.
Yeah.
Did you write out on that pole?
I'm not talking about that pole, no. That lady had me cornered, son, I'm not kidding.
Ben, I was actually planning to visit you this week, but that's not going to happen.
Thank you, Eric.
We, we do have some good neighborhood watch groups who keep up with that.
They'll hold your hand, I'll guarantee you.
I've been stopped two or three times, later in the afternoon, looking at some things, yeah.
I ain't stopped at no more of them four-way stops in Alabama City, either, they'll jump on you.
Well, and, and, Mr. President, since we are, since we are still in open forum here, it's good to see Commissioner Parker with us here today. The people on Stroud Avenue, you know, you know, that's a joint venture between the county and the city for the drainage problem that we have, so we're going, we're moving forward with phase two of the drainage problem that we have there. Several of the residents that are in that 14th Street area, 13th and 14th Street area, be, be on the lookout for people coming to you, getting your permission to make sure that we can put adequate drainage in. They're going to need some easements to eliminate that water from running through your yard trying to get back to Stroud Avenue. So the project is on the way, and as soon as weather permits, it will be moving forward.
Mayor?
Yeah, I want to comment a little bit on what Councilman Stewart was talking about. As far as the council and myself are concerned, we're not raising any taxes on anybody, we pay enough taxes already. You got to learn to deal with what you got, and we can do that. We're looking at trying to hire some retired police, ABI, FBI, Highway Patrol, ABC Board Agents, anybody that's certified. We have retirees now that work our security on the front gate, and they work, if you're retired from the state, I think you can make around 20, excuse me, 20 to 21,000 a year. And we have officers in three schools already, that leaves about 10, and if we can come up with a list of about 20 to 25, we'll be able to work with them just like we do on the front gate, and of course, they'll be off in the summer. But also, we need something out of Montgomery, we need, you know, I think if you're been retired over a couple of years, that then you, to be certified, you have to go back to the academy. A lot of the retired guys, they don't want to go back for the physical part, and they really wouldn't need to anyway, they're not going to be back on the streets. And, but we do need something passed down there where they can take the firearms training and be certified, and that way they'll be able to have a gun in the school. But we're going to deal with all this in-house, if we get some money out of Washington or Montgomery, that'll be just even greater, but we're going to deal this in-house and we're going to take care of our schools. Also, we're looking at the thing you see on TV a lot, Life Alert. I think we're going to check and see what we can come up with on buying a buck price. I hope we could get a good deal, but instead of having just one or two people who would sound the alarm if something happens, each teacher would have one of those, and when you hit the button, it goes straight to 911. And we, we're working on our schools, no matter what the rest of them do. Thanks.
Mayor, may I ask a question? I've had several people to, to approach me about the notion, you know, that what we just spoke about, because we had mentioned it as being a possibility several weeks ago. Would we be premature in putting the word out now that it's out there that we're going to do that? That's what we're trying to do, that's one of the things that we want to do. Would it be premature for us to tell those folk out there in the city of Gaston that if you think you qualify, or if you're retired, or if you have the qualifications for the position, that they need to go ahead and be upfront with us so that the selection process will be made easier to go ahead and get in touch with the, with the chief of police or your office, which one?
Actually, Chief Crane is already working on that. Anybody who's interested, who was a certified retired, or is a certified retired law enforcement officer of any type, needs to get in touch with Chief Crane. I think, Chief, you sort of have a list going, I believe, on some of that, is that correct? Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Yes, sir. That'd be good.
Don't forget the legislators.
We don't want them in our schools.
That's true.
But you, you ain't going to be able to put some of those officers in there if they don't change the law.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're not certified anyway, so don't worry about it.
They're going to be certified. You have to be certified.
That's what I'm saying.
We got to, we got to make one, we got to ask for one change, I guess, from the legislation.
They know about it. Actually, we got somebody down there yesterday and today making sure they get this information.
I understand, and I wish them luck in Montgomery to get anything changed at this point in time.
I know.
I trust that dude. I trust that dude, it's too much at stake. So moved.
I'll entertain a motion, we adjourn.